All right, everyone, it's 2:04. We'll go ahead and call the workshop to order. So in attendance, for the record, we have all board members. Doug, oh, actually, we don't have Bob.
Bob will be late.
He is coming.
He's coming, okay. So we have Carol, Ed Cinco, Flavia Walsh, and then Doug Banks. And we'll go ahead and we'll start with... Do you want to present to Chelsea like how we did it last, or you want Laura?
Yeah, we'll talk to you now.
Okay.
So this first item is the organizational chart that Laura requested at the last meeting. Understand that we're just starting to gear up for budget. Typically, we do capital first, and then we do personnel, and then we give you a draft that gives staff time to give you a rough draft of the budget. Time in. Really, this is just our existing positions. We do have currently three vacancies. One is a field operator, one is where Julie is retiring, it's an AP payroll specialist, and then the third is a part-time park attendant. We haven't necessarily had any positions vacant for an extended period of time. I think like...
For the utilities technician, it's more like we hire somebody and... And someone leaves, so it's not like the same position has been open. We've been able to hire people that we have.
With engineers?
Kind of like a rotating...
So if we go to the one that says Gateway District Organizational Chart by Position. So is this what you're envisioning for this coming year? I'm assuming this is as... This chart is actually right now. So are you envisioning the same thing, or are you envisioning changes somewhere?
So actually, technically, there are two positions on here that we did not put on here, that we did not hire this year, instead we contracted out. One was a GIS analyst position, which we're able to use external resources for. So we've kind of shifted that money towards a contract, and then the other one was...
Landscape, which is not on here.
A landscape lead. We took that, those duties, and gave those to the project manager. So we'll actually have a deduct of two positions next year, two full-time positions, but that monies will move into the operations side of it.
And it was... And it was more efficient for us to outsource the GIS.
Yes.
We got more productivity from contracting than we would internally, more cost-effective.
We're working with Tetra Tech on, they have a whole team that is dedicated to districtly GIS. So we're going to give it a try this year. We believe that'll be more efficient. We've tried actively recruiting for that position since the budget started and have been unsuccessful.
Yeah, I mean, as long as we're hitting our timeline on the accomplishments, fine. The landscape position, just the benefit of having that underneath the project manager gives us what advantage or what?
The duties of that merged to the project manager position. Since I started here and really with, that position has been the hardest to retain. You're, it's ultimately a contracts manager position with some knowledge of the landscaping that we have out. So, and that's mainly what the project manager does anyway, is contracts management. He has picked up pretty much all of the requirements that were of the landscape lead position. So there was a cost savings there and...
And the responsibility that is to ensure that our landscape contracts are being executed at quality, on schedule. So you have to, either you're working closely with staff that has the expertise, so you trickle that up. This is what needs to be done, this is what needs to be called out, or they have that internal expertise within. What have we seen? Because landscaping and let's say maintenance period, pond maintenance, that type of stuff, we've had issues over the years, and it always seems when we come to either pre-contract or post-contract, we identify things that weren't getting done or wasn't in the contract under this current structure with the project manager. Are we seeing a higher efficiency in work execution, higher quality, accountability? Are we seeing those things occur under this structure?
From a staffing perspective, yes. From a contracts perspective, there's been no return in mainscape. You've felt it on your side in Gateway Greens. So I am very confident with staff's abilities, capabilities to continue in this, to manage the mainscape contract.
And I would say that I don't have a, of landscaping, have any less issues. The issues are on the vendor's side than on our side.
Yeah.
We learned something just in the last two weeks because we're making a switch. And we're learning our vulnerability of some of this new high-tech equipment. We need somebody here in one of the departments, wherever, I'm assuming Public Works, that needs to be knowledgeable of this new baseline irrigation system we're coming up with. Because we don't, and we're relying on our vendor. I guarantee you, you're going to get in trouble.
That's a great point. You want to comment on that?
Yeah, I just want to touch on that. So Nathan, who is our projects manager, is overseeing the implementation of this. We have talked about when that system comes to fruition, is hiring an irrigation tech that is their sole job. You know, as part, in addition to maintenance.
On our side.
On our side, and take that responsibility.
That would communicate with the vendor.
Yes.
So there would be a reduction in the contract for those services because they're included, okay. And then I will also chime in regarding, I never felt like the landscaping position was a full-time position.
Agreed.
You know, and I don't, the issues that we're having now is the issue that we see it seems...
They need to work together.
But I am worried about when we do get the new system, how is that going to be? But if the vision is to go ahead and hire an expert, then I'd be more comfortable because we would just be deducting from one another. It may be offset or more, but okay, that makes sense.
And what I see is, so for one, from a, and I'm going to lump these together because I think when you look at maintenance, I think you run into some of the similar issues. That's pond maintenance as well as landscape. Because we have very certain criteria, it's very vendor-dependent, and just due to the vast volume of ponds, volume of space for landscaping, you have to stay on top of that stuff. But also, in both those areas, you probably see a lot of turnover within vendors. So it's more of a vendor management position than it is, let's say, like a landscape lead or even a projects contracts person. To me, it's a vendor management position. And you either have to have the right oversight and accountability between that individual and the vendors. Also, you have to have the right controls in the contract. You have to have things where if there is turnover or if there's mis-execution. I mean, to me, turnover should never be an excuse from a vendor's perspective because they should anticipate that. And again, I'm not paying for turnover. Turnover is a you problem, not a me problem. So that's where I'm hoping that what we've seen by having dedicated contract individuals and let's say a project manager, that we're also identifying controls that we either have in place in contracts or in the future where if there is a lapse or if there is a drop in quality, do that stuff, we've got some clawbacks or some controls that we can kick off or we can execute. It says, okay, you don't hit certain things, we either get credits on that or we get, you know, something. Because we have to hold that accountability, and I'm not a big advocate of, let's say, you know, performance bonuses, so to speak, if it's not something that's quantitative that you can control. But I think the contract should have stipulations if you don't hit this or if you have been cited for, you know, these areas, that there is some clawbacks or something on our side.
We have those in both of those contracts.
Usually a point system.
Yeah, it's, in the landscape one, we actually have dollars sitting in a separate non-interest-bearing account that if they don't perform, and we have all of the language in the contract. Same thing, again, since I've been here, we've written, every contract we've rewritten, we've put in those clauses. So we've protected ourselves not only on that front, but also Daniel and Elle and Stephanie and Nathan, we've been working hard on implementing Cartograph and using that as our work order management system and being able to better monitor and put inspections on paper, having reports pushed up, having, being able to communicate with the vendor in writing instead of 10,000 emails flying around. So implementing this work order management system in the next year is going to be a change.
And there's one other piece. I know for as long as I've been on the board, and I know Ed's been right there with me, we always talk about value engineering, the things that we do repetitively, we should see value engineering inefficiencies as a result. Kind of goes back to my automotive days. You know, OEMs trickle down to the tier ones, the tier twos, the tier three suppliers. It's either cost reduction or quality improvements. So I know we've got inflation, cost of living, gas, all that stuff, but we should be seeing contract over contract efficiencies from these reoccurring vendors, and I take it all the way up to Tetra Tech. You know, the amount of time that they've been with us or mainscape or whatever vendors that we use, even some of the ones we're using for pond, Pond Make Restorations, Med Tower, the ones that we use repeatedly, we should see improvement in process. Ponds might be a little tricky because not all pond is created equal, and so the, you know, execution could be slightly different. But we really need to see, you know, here mainscape, we are more efficient because we have this routine. We, you know, we're using this type of machinery versus this, we've got better skilled workers, you know, whatever. I'm not saying we have to see necessarily a price reduction, even though I would rather cease that. But we also have to show higher quality service. Because if we have to just keep paying increases because of inflation, that doesn't sit well with me if we're not seeing equal or greater to value. So these are just things that I would encourage.
I think a lot of that would be helped by having inspection on our side, staff that while they're not out there 24/7, they can be overseeing stuff and accountability.
Yeah.
That's all of it.
You know, quarterly business reviews or...
So if you think you're going to do it over and over and over again, but I've learned my lesson in this last week with this baseline and switching over on irrigation. Maybe what we're doing and making this change and essentially eliminating most of the equipment and putting in all new equipment, we didn't do it that way. We utilized the existing valves, incorporated them into the system. And every time I turn around, I've got a change order work item, $500 here, $600 there, $300 here, $1,000 here. What do you say?
Yeah, you have to do it.
What do you say? You have to do it.
And that's one area, irrigation is one of the areas that can bleed you dry.
Somebody needs to be able to see this stuff and say, yeah, it's broken, yeah, we need to do it. Otherwise, I guarantee you, you're going to be writing, right now, we're looking at a 10% overrun just in change orders for broken equipment.
Yeah, and I'll say one thing too, and maybe Daniel has a good grasp on this, but we talk about, you know, an irrigation specialist or, you know, whatever that role is going to be. It's going to be imperative that they're, that they're not only there at the beginning of the project and afterwards, but also there needs to be a lead-in time because we need to have an irrigation expert who is at the table prior to when work gets started, so they have an understanding of our, in-depth knowledge of our existing system, where everything is. And I would love to say that that's Daniel or someone on his team, but, you know, Daniel's responsible for a very large area. I think the project and the sensitivity and the costs that's going to be associated, we may need to look at pulling the trigger on that position sooner rather than later. And if you need, if you need allocated funds for that, or if you need the board to approve that position, like literally, let's open it now so we can start looking. I think we would all be in agreement that it's a good idea to get that started because the cost implications of not having the right people at the table during that time could cost us way more than what it would do for three months prior to having that person onboard.
We could get burnt.
We'll discuss internally. I have originally projected that conversation this time next year when we're talking the next year's budget, just because I know with construction and timing of everything that it's going to take quite a bit of time. We're not, we're only 30% designed.
Well, it's going to take you time to find that person.
Yeah. I think it'll be...
And I would maybe do a contract. So here's, hear me out on this. Like, maybe we contract that position out for 12 months with the possibility of it converting. And it could be a full-time position, you know, that's fine. But I think the challenge you're going to be on that is finding the right depth of knowledge, given the timing-wise, being able to have the runway long enough to ramp them up. But then also, it's going to have to be attractive enough that you retain someone because it's not going to do any benefit for us to have someone onboard, go through pre and implementation just to have them leave after six months. So that's going to be a risk.
One of the issues we're having right now, and we have since we've completed the baseline system and over a year and a half ago, is that the vendor, i.e. mainscape for us, mainscape for us here, they got to have somebody that knows what the hell they're doing on this job. They got to know what they're doing because otherwise, we're going to be spending a lot of money fixing stuff.
So you're saying we need to represent it from mainscape at the table?
We need to know that if we're going to build this $5 million piece of equipment and put it out there, and we're going to hand it over to them to operate it, I want to make sure they...
Someone's knowledgeable of the system.
Somebody there knows what the hell they're doing.
We kind of, wait, wait, I... Very, very top of that. We did have that conversation, I think, two years ago with mainscape when we were talking about the system that we were going to put in. We did ask those questions then. My concern is, what if we don't go with mainscape?
Well, any vendor.
That's what I'm saying.
When we did, when we just did the RFP, a qualification for the bidding was, one, you had to go to the pre-bid meeting, and two, you had to show and demonstrate knowledge of the baseline system. You didn't do either one of those, we didn't even allow you to bid.
But I think that's an after effect, so I think we would just continue because that would be with any vendor regardless. So we'll put in the system, because we're not going to put in a system that somebody can work on. We'll put in a system that is adequate for the needs of the community, right? And then, then when we go to a vendor, then we say, you know, can you work on this? And then be part of the specification.
Nully, nully, work on it. Operate it, operate it. Know how to run it.
We did, as of now, two years ago, when I sat with Chelsea at the table, and I think Daniel was part of the conversation, we lightly touched on this subject, and they were comfortable with it. And I think there was even one addition type of product that we were not aware that they were working on it. They mentioned to us, but to me, I was like, it's way too soon, but they were aware of it.
Let me go back, let me talk with RWA about timelines. Because again, I don't, I'm thinking we're a year and a half out before we even really get under construction with this project.
Keep in mind, I agree with what Doug was saying. Get our guy that's going to be our eyes on. We need him in not before, while we're doing digging, we need him to look at it before, while it's just pencils.
Yeah, and there's also...
That we can change it.
Yeah, and I would also look to insert an amendment into our existing contract that requires mainscape to have a point of contact or an irrigation specialist that can work with our team during, you know, we will, they'll either, they should be familiar with similar systems, but... And I don't think we should look for an additional charge on that, just due to our length of service. We're not asking someone really for an additional, necessarily a ton of additional dedicated hours, but someone that we can train in conjunction with our vendor that we use. So they're going to get trained up on our system, but we need a dedicated person.
We have a backup.
Yeah, so it's a value benefit to both organizations, and I don't think it should come in additional costs. So that's an amendment that I would look to push forward in that contract.
Let me go back and talk with RWA and Nathan and Daniel and just get a rough timeline. I think it may be premature to have this position this year, but I want to get a better timeline from them. If they say no, they think we're going to be under, you know, under construction next year, then we'll bring that back to you.
Yeah, just back into the timeline a little bit.
I don't think you're going to find this guy just out there underneath a tree waiting for a call.
You never know.
They're hard to get because this is a very sophisticated system.
Where are we at in our mainscape contract? How many years in?
We just renewed it.
So we're a three-year or is it two?
We're, it's a three-year contract, so we've probably got two more years.
Two more years. So mainscape is baked in for two years. Now, what we could do is look for mainscape, we could either contract this person from mainscape if we wanted to, and that way mainscape stays sticky with us on that. If we can't, if we're having challenges going externally, there's some options that we may have here, but I don't think this irrigation person is going to fall off a tree.
I want to be cautious for exactly what Flavia said, is they may not be who we end up going with this baseline system. Even though they're the most familiar and they have offered, you know, any input that, you know, to provide to us. But we'll come back to you.
Yeah, and that person doesn't necessarily have to come from mainscape, but I'm saying there might be irrigation specialists within these landscape companies that would contract them out to us for a certain amount of time. The one thing I just wanted, on the utilities, those specialty field positions, Laura made a point that said, you know, typically, when we have a backfield, it's not necessarily, you know, the same exact position. This person leaves, this person steps into that role. So I assume they're doing a little bit of different responsibility, right? Their job responsibility might be slightly different or...
For...
It's the same.
Generally, why are they leaving, Doug? I guess that's my question. Is it a pay, is it a benefit, is it a load of work?
It was paid.
Because that's what I think a conversation I had with you about seven months ago, and it was a pay issue. Pay slash benefits, right?
We haven't had anybody, the one person leave since we adjusted the pay schedules when they went to do something.
Okay, so we addressed that.
Yeah, it's probably all over.
So that's what I was thinking.
And that's one area that I would always have one above, you know, kind of what we need.
That's what we have.
That's what we, that's the model we're using today? So you always have a flex?
I want to be clear though, because one of, talking about that work order management system, one of the things that we've implemented is valve exercising program and hydrants. So that's not only the bottle, but the sewer, the irrigation valves, and then every hydrant in our system. So the first of each month, that utility team has issued 100-plus, maybe even 200-plus work orders to exercise valves. So we calculated our entire system, divided that by 12 months and said, our goal is to exercise all of our valves at least once a year. And so my plan is to take what, that information that we have so far, the time that it's taking them, seeing, do we have enough staff to meet that need as well as do everything else? So that information, we're compiling and we'll have it finalized. But as of right now, I'm talking with staff, I don't envision any additional positions for next year. If anything, a reduction of FTEs.
Full-time equivalents.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Bill Barron comments.
So then back to the chart itself. So we can more or less, what you're suggesting is that this be our organizational chart for next year, for this coming budget. At the next meeting then, could you enhance this chart by giving us the silos that everybody's going to be sitting on? You don't forget the utilities, that's not it, but the rest of it, can you? Give us an idea?
Yes.
Where the money is going to land? What silo, what bucket, whatever, where would you want to use it?
Laura's been working on that, so we'll have that for you.
Okay, so then if we go to the one by name, the organizational chart by name. You've already told us that Elle is retiring this summer. Are there any other position movements in here that we need to be aware of or that you're thinking of or that...
Julie is retiring as well.
Oh, Julie's, okay.
Our fiscal specialist. She, and we're changing that position to be an AP slash payroll specialist.
AP, accounts payable?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So taking some of the responsibilities that Laura is doing now that are more...
The administrative side of HR, like the onboard area.
Data entry.
Payroll, that kind of stuff, take that off my plate. I'll still keep like actual HR, but the administrative side would shift to this. I will be like the backup for that.
The only other changes that I could see is we've established career ladders this year and given those to staff and say, if you're a maintenance worker, three now, or if you're a utility operator, three now, we've told them exactly how to, what they need to do to get and to be promoted to a utility field operator, two, a one, et cetera. So if anything, it would be additional education and trainings for staff, and somebody who's a three could move to two or two to a one, et cetera.
Okay.
So, but not, I don't see any other...
But you're talking more or less intern here and everything, and not necessarily hiring a bunch of people from outside.
Correct. Now, I would like to caveat all of this that as of right now, Pelican has three subcommittees that are doing a lot of the legwork. If anything were to happen with those subcommittees, we would have to reevaluate our staffing.
Okay.
And I think that's a conversation that we should definitely have it on the table. Sooner than later, given what has happened in the last week and some questions that I addressed at 3 o'clock. And I think that's, we need clarification or we need to just, yeah, I think that would be important.
And under Carrie's position, that's also programs and events falls under her?
Have you?
As we go into this next year, I would love to see some expectations more around programs. And part of our goals would be to establish three new programs for district utilization for residents of Gateway. I'd like to dive into that a little bit more.
I know that the board assigned that to the Parks and Rec Committee, and I know that they've been tossing that around, but we have a couple resignations, so we've got some vacancies that we need to get backfilled on the Park Committee.
But I wouldn't, I mean, it's great for Parks and Recs, but...
But that's the staff.
Organically, that should be, you know, with Carrie and Parks and Rec.
We need them to focus in on some things instead of shotgunning it.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's, to me, and I would, I would look at the demographics too. I think if I'm just lowballing it, I'd say three new programs. One should be something that is dedicated to our seniors, one maybe for all, and then another one could be maybe around our youth. And it could be anything from a pickleball league to, you know, maybe something more around the pool. Or, I mean, there's so many, and I would go to Pelican, just look at all the programs that they have. I mean, it shouldn't be that difficult to at least, let's identify five and the benefit that they have to Gateway and just get them kicked off.
And then, before we leave, structure and people. Last year, when we were talking about this, we kind of left the subject of benefits and pensions and things like that. You were going to get back to the staff and see, it seemed like when I first came on the board a couple of years ago, we were very good at training people, and then they left to get better paying jobs. And we were going to work on a program to not only train them but keep them. So at our next meeting, could you bring back whatever you have in mind for benefits and retention and pensions or whatever program you're thinking about?
And I think what we should see there is if we're looking at increasing benefits, there's a dollar amount associated. And I know that Laura did a lot of really good work on that, I don't know how many months ago. Or said, this is the amount, it was a couple, $100,000, $100,000.
To go to FRS for just the people that...
Yeah, yeah, just for that.
Just the people in their retirement right now.
Just those, it was like $130,000. Well, there's two ways we can go about this. One, we can offer benefits that are comparable to what's in the area. Or we take that $130,000 and distribute among base pay. So you can either pay people on the front end and say, look, we're going to pay you more, and you can take that money and find supplemental healthcare or add to it or whatever. Or we're going to say, hey, we offer really great benefits, and if you look at total rewards, which is your total compensation, we're equal to or even above what most, you know, what most organizations would pay. That's an organizational philosophy, and I don't know in our situation if it is, if it's more advantageous for us to bulk up our benefits because it would only impact 20%, you know, positively, only really impact 20% of our population. Whereas if we were to take that money and just bump up our base pay, that might be a more attractive thing. I don't know the answer to that because I haven't seen the numbers, but we should be looking at both ways. We don't have to, you don't have to go all in on the benefits piece. I think at the end of the day, it could be one or the other, or it could be both. But that's what I would look at, because I think a lot of people in today's environment are probably looking more for higher base than they are benefits.
The only, I will say, we've, thanks to this board, we've done a lot of increasing of our benefits, staying within budget, of course, through staggered retirement contributions based on tenure. We moved our entire health plan to Cigna, which is a PPO, instead of an HMO, so they don't have to go, you know, to your general doctor before you go to a specialist.
We're able to reduce our deductibles a lot. $20,000, $3,000 on the way.
I know we've made some great improvements in this area, but my point was we just need to look at options.
The remaining thing is spouse or family added benefits, but you hit the nail on the head. Doing that, it wouldn't benefit me, it wouldn't benefit her, but...
There's your problem, you're good.
You've got...
But if I paid you $7,000 or $10,000 more annually, then you could afford to buy in for your spouse if it made more sense. And those that don't have a spouse, well, why am I not getting that same bonus of that? And so it's just...
That is an age-old problem, believe me. I never solved it, I guarantee.
You have a problem with age?
It's a tough one because you have such disparity in the workforce.
The only thing, if you look at like the county or even the city, most larger municipalities pay 50% of... pay 50% of either family or spouse. And then the employee would have to pick up the other 50%. That's the only disparity between us and other municipalities right now.
What do they do, 150 or 90, 10 and 50? Employee 100%?
Yes.
And then 50 on the spouse.
Well, and let's think too, I mean, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but we also have to understand and know what kind of organization we are. We're not like the county or the city where you have lifers, people that will work for 20 years and they will retire. It's very unusual.
To be employed for 20 years.
Yeah. It's very, it's even unlikely in almost in any organization today for you to work 20 years at the same organization. So we're not that organization. We anticipate people working three to five years at most and then they move on. So, you know, accruing some of the pension or the 401K type stuff may not be that big of a deal. So there's just so many variables we need to look at. And I applaud staff for, for doing as much as they've done with the limited resources at their, at their disposal up until now.
We'll, we'll keep evaluating and bring back to you guys with the personnel at the next meeting, some options.
Right. I would, I would just like to see if you're proposing any kind of a benefits package upfront. Because in my mind, whenever you're budgeting, you start with the people first and see what you have to do to either keep or enhance or whatever them. And then later on, you get down to, are we going to buy a new truck or are we going to do this or that or whatever? But I think we need to keep in mind that our employees are our most valuable asset, period. And just be accurate and timely with that.
So we'll go ahead and move into the separate budget discussion. Right. And then one thing, just if we can just have date, like put, like a footer with the date.
Yes.
You mean?
Yep.
Given that this is one out of 100,000, yeah.
So this is, this next item is more of a first blush of capital projects or initiatives for next year, well, really the next five years, but if you focus on FY 2026 column. The first, if, I don't know how you want to go through by fund or just if you have any questions about any of the specific projects.
I'll throw out an example, just one that.
We'll just start page six and then we'll go questions on that.
Taking the utilities one is in my knowledge of the, the community and the district. 29 lift stations, estimated service life 30. We've got 29 lift stations and they got service lives all over the hell.
Yes.
Well, that's what we're missing on this. If it's 30 years, where are we currently at in that 30-year cycle? Oh, we had 15.
It's a big difference.
And now lift stations could be all over the place, but that's what we're missing on.
Yeah, and I would, I could see that been in a five-year deal, zero to five, six to 10, so forth. But then put them, because if you've got them to where the, the majority of them are 25 to 30 years, then the amount of money we have to put aside aside initially is.
It falls in the next three or five years.
But if, if half of these all have a five-year life out of 30 to go, we got a problem.
Well, so staff has put together a plan that we rehab two lift stations a year and that'll get us on the cycle that we need. This is actually a 10-year plan, we just hid years six.
But my point is, is that, the only reason I bring this up is I just went through the HOA training session yesterday and they hammered, hammered capital reserve. You've got to be accurate on the description of the items that deserve capital reserve. You've got to be accurate on the amount of money it's going to take to replace them. The only one that where you can be a little bit flexible is, do you want to build in an inflation factor to it or you just want to take today's cost and assume it's going to be there 20 years from now? You can get burned either way. But the big thing is, is then you've got to put the cash in every single year for every single item if you want a true capital reserve.
Yes.
And that means you need a lot more detail in my eye here than this. These are the topics, but they need to be split apart to get more detail.
Okay, or I have a question because my understanding is the more detail you put in and the more that money has to use for that, it won't allow staff to move within that category.
Why can't we pool? We could pool. Why can't we pool within the?
So that's what I say, the only thing that we increase is the dollar amount, giving it that there will be more scope under the line item. But what I'm afraid is if you just detail too much an item to the dollar.
The only thing you've got is, I understand would be is if we pool, we just got to watch pool silos.
Well.
You can't, you can't enter, you can't take and pool one silo.
You have to have specifics.
Because it's different method of funding it.
You, this is a tier, the CIP should be tiered. You should have at the very, to the infinite detail, when you say 29 lift stations, you list, here's the 29 lift stations, here's their current length of life.
Remaining, remaining life.
And then you can drill those up to lift station rehab, and then you could even go one tier higher to say this is, you know, public works, rehabilitation project. So we can, we can get them to, to a bigger bucket, but you've got to get to that smaller detail. And the one areas that I would encourage staff to look at is, one, we need to know what is the existing, what is, what is the timeframe that they're currently operating under?
Where are we in the life cycle?
Yeah, where are they at in the life cycle? And then two, we should have some type of score. Maybe it's one through 10. So, and my example of this, and it's impacted the district if, if that rehab or that replacement is not done, or if there's a failure. So as an example, a lift station, if a lift station is not maintained or not replaced during that life cycle, what is the impact that it may have on the district or the residents?
Or the severity issue.
The severity, almost like a severity score. And we might have some items that are higher and, and some that are lower, and we still might do those because it's a, it's an efficiency player. It may not be a, you know, a catastrophic risk failure, but if we replace this system with this system, we're more efficient, it provides cost-saving, you know, opportunities. So I think that's what we're missing. We're not, I know we're not there, but that's what I would.
Julie, I have a question.
Yes.
So I know 720 statute says that when you do a reserve and when you either hire somebody to do the reserve study, they'll give you the estimated life, the majority of communities usually they either extend it or they're at the life, right? So that's when. It does also include that if an engineer or an architect or the consultant sees an item that needs replacement, now it puts the burden on the HOA to do the replacement in a very short amount of time. Would that apply here? Because that's what I'll be afraid, because the majority of these items that have been neglected, they either have surpassed their, their life or they're at, right? So for us to get that money, we don't have eight years to collect the money, we may have a year or two. Are we then in the bind because then there'll be a cost to the residents because suddenly now we have all those items because we know there's a lot of things on the table and we may not have the ability to prioritize as we think is best because now we have somebody that's above us, which is going to be the engineer. And that kind of came about after the condo collapse and sunny days. So I'm wondering, would that apply for us too? Because then we have to be very, very careful. Because if we go out there and we get this and we find out there's a lot of stuff that we need to get done that we know, then are we buying to get it done and within more, at more timeframe?
That statutory scheme, again.
Does that work for us?
Does not apply to the.
So ours is not.
But, but it is good, I guess, from a planning perspective to have that and go for the basis.
I don't disagree, yeah.
Again, and then you can update it each year as to what you understand the estimated use.
So ours is elective.
I'm sorry?
Ours is elective, not, not mandated.
But elective, but prudent, I would say, based upon my experience with other districts.
So that means.
And I think Stephen would also chime in with that, Stephen Bluman, Russ.
Okay, but I mean, if it's elective, then that means that we have some decision that the final S could make to determine how we tweak it.
Kind of how we did the EOPC and we had that meeting. I think that's the last time we did it, right?
Yeah, and then if you change the use of the money in a future year from what you are listing now, you need to go through that notice process under the statute, the mailed notice and the notice note, because you're changing the purpose for which the funds were initially collected.
Yeah, there's, there's where I'm more concerned than anything is, is that I totally would love to see an elective pooled method of capital reserve, but within the silos.
Yeah.
If we, if we raise the money and the revenue to pay for that, it comes out of one source, we don't want to transfer that to another source that where that's not the case.
Yeah, but again, I don't believe you're locked into the specific projects. Again, you have categories. And again, we'll double check with Stephen and Russ, but.
Well, that's not our part to do.
You have a categories, you have road improvements, certain infrastructure, like I said, drainage structures. And if you change the purpose which is used for a category, a different category, I think that's the global macro.
As long as we stay within the categorization.
That's my understanding.
Same as with operation.
Yeah.
There is no difference in how we do it with operation.
Don't check that with Stephen or Russ.
Exactly the same thing.
Laura, you know how Russ's spreadsheets kind of went like this?
They won't be doing that anymore again.
That's where we're headed.
Yeah.
So we.
Chelsea, do you have any comment or question?
Well, I just, I want to go back to what you started with Ed was, last year, we had done every year, like if we want to replace this in year five, then we wanted to budget $5,000 a year for five years until we could pay for it. We did it that way last year. You guys said, no, you didn't like that. We only want to budget the year that it needs money to be funded.
Because that's when we saw the cost. So that's what I was trying to say, like.
I mean, that's the right way to do it, however, it's hard to start that.
Yeah.
Especially when you've got, when you're, you know, you already have a pretty big bucket of stuff you're spending for.
You opted to do them, you opted to collect the funds based on the expenses for the year not to have to build it as well.
We should always go back and revisit that.
Okay.
But we never wanted to do it, to take the capital budget and fund it at 100%. We always talked about 25%, 50%, 75%.
Well, the thing that's on this schedule is, is that are there anything on that line? I don't see them jump out. Yes, I do, I see one. Are there anything that's, is there anything that's on here that's identified that's not in this five-year period, but let's say it's in year six? So let's say it's a $100,000 item. Are we going to wait to year six and get scared with the sticker shock of it? Or are you going to take it and divide it by six and put each one of the years?
Like your Aquifer wells?
The $250,000 one there.
Yeah, the one that says, existing 2 million gallon tank repairs, it's not budgeted for the next five years, but in the sixth year, is it $100,000?
Well, and also, does that price tag jump up to 4.5?
Yeah, but there's going to be some offsetting things that are going to fall off, hopefully. There'll be some, some things we accomplished in 26 that fall off.
If we want to try to have somewhat of a level introduction of, introduction of revenue to pay for this on a level basis, not one of these deals where one year our residents' rates go way through the hot, the roof and then down, and get it level, then the more accurate you are on the date that the money is needed, the better chance you have to having it level.
But you shouldn't be looking beyond five years.
Do what?
I don't think you should be looking beyond five years.
Well, everybody will tell you it's 20 years.
That's what I mean, but you can't, you're not going to forecast. We should focus on the next five.
That's why if you go 20 years, don't put inflation in it. Just take, if the cost of the item is $100,000, assume that it's done in the 20th year, assume it's $100,000. If you start injecting inflation, you will.
But that's when you revise it because when you do the capital, the number they will give you, that's the number you stick with. Because they are taking the life expense, they're expecting that at that time, at least the ones that I had done, it's, if it's $100,000, it's not as of now is what they're expecting in five years, the life.
The cost of replacement.
Of that one that needs to be replaced.
Yeah, I guess, just from the utility perspective, Ralph, tell us does a five-year analysis?
Yes.
They go out five years and what they project the capital cost would be, what revenues and rates need to be in a five-year window.
In five years, yeah.
So you can look at it in year two, you can look at the next five.
The only thing when you do it that way, just realize that it's a whole new ballgame in year six. Because if you've moved those steps out and you haven't covered the cost.
By year four, you should be doing and is looking at.
I revise, yeah. Because once you go, once you've revised.
So it's moving all the time.
Every year it moves.
So is there anything with?
I'm sorry, Tony?
Yes.
So in Ed's initial thing where he wanted more detail, if you put in here in 2026, we're going to do lift station A and lift station B. And in 2027, we're going to do C and D. And in 2028, we're going to do G and H, something like that. But suppose sometime next year, lift station G goes down. Is it that amount of detail that causes problem?
No.
Or, I mean, as long as you had two lift stations and one of them goes down, so you don't do B and you put G in there instead, that's okay, right?
That's correct. Again, yeah, because the capital project is a, is a plan you have for the infrastructure repair or replacement, then you have the budget based upon that capital project. But if you need to move projects around within that category, you can do that.
That's what, what she just described is the options you really want to be able to build into it to where you don't have to be perfect.
And again, that's my understanding.
You can, you can take a hit and make a change.
That's my understanding how it's always been done and you can double check with Stephen and Russ, but that's, again, it's the category.
The detail.
So other than the useful life remaining, what other detail did you, were you looking for?
Having a real, having a real good idea of the cost.
To me, it's cost.
Yeah.
Because I think the last time we did this, it was half staff, you know, it was prior to, to, I think Laura was here. So it was mainly staff dictating the cost. And that's when, when we're starting doing the projects, there was a huge, what was the cost? So to me, if we're going to do it, then we should have accurate costs.
Yeah. Well, and again, back to my point, I think there should be some type of CIP or project rating.
There are so many books that you can get on this stuff, utility books, that give you an idea of cost. We're not going to get any more accurate than that anyway.
The procurement items on here, staff has solicited quotes for already and we've projected an increase based on inflation. Every vehicle manufacturer goes up a percentage at the first of the year. And then the projects on here are the EOPCs from Tetra Tech. So we've covered all those bases of any concerns of the cost.
I know in the past, when we did, did we budget, like when I very first started here, they were just taking guesses at what the projects would cost. And then the last three years, staff has actually gone out and said, hey, if we were to replace this, what would it cost?
So it's a point in time directionally correct?
Yes.
The numbers.
It is, yeah.
Which is good.
So is there, so you'll notice.
And then since this is utilities, if we look down 2026, is there anything in here that's going to trigger a new rate study?
No. We've planned for all these already.
We, so we don't need a new rate study this year for utilities?
But more importantly.
There's a surprise, no, because we actually supplied our 10-year capital improvement when we did the rate studies. So all of these were already.
That feels very bitter.
The question is, goes back to our capital reserve study.
So I will tell you, the conversation I had with Ralph Tellez last year is, the numbers are tight, but we're covered.
From our capital reserves?
From our rates and.
They wouldn't have been if we hadn't caught that deal at the end.
Well, and the county, you know, they, they're hitting us again with another 8% increase on July 1st. We took that into account. So our rates are going to cover us and rebuild our reserves because we have spent quite a bit of our reserves lately. And then having these SRF projects where now that they're finally approved, Laura's been, you know, requesting the money to be put back into our, our bank accounts. So we're gold, we're golden on this for now.
And how often?
For 2026.
And at least through 2020, I think eight, 29 was when the rate study was done from last year.
Laura, can you scroll this up? Because I'm assuming what's missing here is a total at the bottom.
There's no total.
Is it, is it on there?
No, she had me take it off.
Oh, you haven't done that yet?
She had me take it off.
Because what, what reason I ask is.
She knows what has scared you.
Well, the reason I ask is because I looked at those first two columns and I see numbers with seven digits in it. We're going to have a deal that's like this.
You're going to, no, because the, the million dollar projects are either grant or SRF funded.
Or bonded.
Yes. So we didn't have the time when the agenda came out to, you know, separate SRF capital.
So that's there's no total.
So you, you actually have cash in here as opposed to debt retirement if it's a funded 20-year deal. Because we don't need all that cash right at the back.
There's a lot of stuff you have.
That's a big difference. That's a big difference. Just example, 6 billion, 6 billion eight for the two meter deals. We're not going to have to have 6 billion eight in pocket. We're going to borrow it. So that just essentially takes them, throws that out 20 years. That makes a big difference.
Anything else for utilities before we move to the next?
Have you got everything?
We believe so. So what we do is, we'll do just like we did previous years. If any of the board members see an item, we just email you directly.
Yeah.
And then you. Email me, I mean Laura. And then so if any of the five of us would think there's something that's missing, we'll.
I do want, I want to call out, the odor control units are in here. That is the added new, since we've had the girl scout in Stony Brook. So that's really probably the only new project that you've seen other than maybe a vehicle replacement.
So then you put a note. We'll, we'll send it to, so if the five of us have anything that we'd like to add, if I could ask that, we send it to Laura. And then Laura, would you put in a note with, you know, like this is by Carol? And then we can discuss it, do they stay or not. But whatever we, we send out to add, you just add it. No subtractions. Subtraction will be done at, at the workshops or following meetings. But addition, I don't have a problem with adding as long as you have the notes of who added who requested.
So we'll still continue to have a, let's say we have a, a broken line that we have to go out, that could be considered capital. We will have an operating budget that has money in there that we don't have to bury it in here.
This is above and beyond.
And are we operating under the assumption that everything under FY2026 on this list has been budgeted and approved?
We're asking, well, for this on utilities, yes. Utilities, yes. Other general fund projects, we're looking for your.
So let me, let me, let me take a step backwards. So we, we've approved a budget for 20.
Five.
For 25.
Five.
So this is everything that we will have under the 20.
This is for 26.
It's what we'll be delivering this year.
This needs to be tweaked, yeah.
But this is just utilities.
But are there any?
Correct.
Okay.
More to come.
Yeah. And, yeah, there's definitely more to come. But are there any items that were approved under 2025 that are also, because again, we're, we run half and half. It's not like it's, we don't run full physical year 25, physical year 2026. You're going to have some overlap.
Projects carried forward.
Yeah. So are there any carry forward projects that have, that are on this 2026 that have, we budgeted, residents have been assessed, and it's been approved?
Not on those utilities.
Not on the.
Not on the utilities. But that's, that's what I want to see on this list. Because as we're going through, I don't want to spend 15 minutes talking about something that we've already approved, that we budgeted, and that residents have already been assessed for.
Yeah.
And if it's not the full amount, what is, you know, we've approved 200,000 of a 400,000 projected cost for 2026. So now we can really spend our time talking about what the, you know, the, the funding deficit might be.
Well, the frustration in dealing with the reserve studies is that an engineer went out and looked at something, pick, pick whatever it is. I'm going to call it a town center roof. And they did it in 2020. He said, that'll be good till 2027. We did our calculation. And all of a sudden in 2022, it had to be replaced. That's what concerns me with these. Is I don't know how much robustness there is in, in the methodology that they use to do it. If they're sitting at a desk, they have not a clue. They'll just use a calculator and say, okay, it's five years, seven years. But the reality is, it was terrible in that particular case.
Well, and in that case, you're almost taking a certain percentage of unforeseen pull forward item and you're budgeting.
And this was a multimillion dollar item for us at Pelican. I mean, that got us.
You're hoping that what you're pulling forward doesn't exceed what you have, even if.
Your capabilities.
Even if you're partially funding. But maybe that's something to consider.
In that case, we got close, we got close to a special assessment.
Right. Hurricanes were another good point.
The key on this is there's notes, is that they be as definitive as possible. So we know exactly what, is this a wild guess? Or how is this done?
Amen, amen.
I do love the notes, by the way.
You what?
We, we asked for this for years. And finally, we're, we've been seeing it over the last, I mean, for a while with you, Laura.
It's very helpful.
Yeah, I would say, yeah. It's really, really helpful.
So nothing in utilities? We have a few minutes. And I think, you want to go public works?
We, we asked to have it updated for what year useful life was.
Yes, yes. But meaning like, we're, we're done with all the directions we have given Laura. Do we want to do public works? Because it's, it's kind of short? Or we want to wait?
Can I just add something? So we've got a really light agenda. So if we need to go over a little bit.
Yeah, that's.
Then let's do that.
It's on the agenda.
These items are on the regular.
We complicated it to the regular meeting.
Anticipating you wanted to talk about.
Okay. As, as I understand, tell me if I got this right. We're going to take item one, lift stations. Apparently we have 29 of them. And we're going to list the last time, numbers one to 29 were updated or built or whatever. Is that how we're going to do it?
We have that in Cartograph, which is our, our asset management system. But if you want us to list all 29 lift stations out in.
I don't want to see that detail, but I'd like to know it's there.
Okay. We can have that in the back of the book.
I go again, back to five-year increments. I don't think anybody's good enough to pick this down to a year. If you've got 29 stations and those are in zero to five, six to 10.
That's where I'm getting.
Put them in that.
All 29 are at one time.
The exercise for that, why it's important is, so we've identified, there's, there's